Good evening and welcome to the January tenth Town Council meeting. If you would mind and rise and join us in the Pledge of the Flag and the ladies of Troop Ten, Seven Sixty-Two will lead us.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The only announcements that I have are our upcoming meetings. There's been change on our start times for our budget meetings, but on, and that's going to be moved from six to six-thirty. Wednesday, January sixteenth at six-thirty in the Matthew Thornton Room is a budget meeting. Thursday, January seventeenth, Wednesday, January twenty-third, both those meetings are six-thirty here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And Thursday, January twenty-fourth is our next regular meeting at seven PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Eileen won't be in, the Town Manager, Eileen Cabanel won't be in this evening. And Paul, did you have any announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Please bear with me because I got about a page and a half, and it's small font. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services will be holding office hours on Monday, January fourteenth, from eleven to one PM in the Memorial Conference Room. That's located in Town Hall, right outside the Town Manager's office, to go over, to go over and to review a technical report that documents the science and the process the DSU's to create their initial proposal for the PFAS MCLs. Also, a lot of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services announcements today. We'll be holding a public hearing session on Thursday, March seventh, at five-thirty in the Campbell High School Auditorium located at One Highlander Court in Litchfield. This public hearing session is regarding formal rulemaking to set contaminant levels, MCLs, for four PFASs' compones, PFOA, PFOS, PFHXS, and PFNA. The Division of Public Health Services, New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, will be holding a PFAS Community Fair in Merrimack on Wednesday, April third, from five to eight PM. The exact location will be announced at a later date. We're working on a location as we speak. The purpose of the fair is to respond to the community concerns by providing an opportunity to meet with state agencies, local providers, PFAS experts, legislators, and advocacy groups. This event will be an informal, where people are encouraged to walk around and ask questions of various potential participating groups, which are, include: DPHS Cancer and Chronic Disease Program, DES Waste Water and Air Division, New Hampshire State Cancer Registry, DPHS Bio-Monitoring, Environmental Public Health Tracking Program, DPHS Public Health Lab, NH Medical Society, Boston's Children's Hospital Pediatric Environmental Health Research Program, Dartmouth Children's Environmental Health Research, Silent Spring Institute, and DPHS is the Division of Public Health and Services. There will be, there are still openings for the Merrimack Police Citizens Police Academy. This program highlights the daily operations of the police department and will give participants an inside view of what police officers do every day. Classes are Wednesday from six PM to nine, beginning January twenty-third, for a ten-week period. Sign up today. And finally, the Media Division will be covering two very important meetings for the Merrimack Village District, on the Merrimack channels and on online. Monday, February twenty-fifth, at the Little Theater at the Merrimack High School at seven PM, the public hearing for Merrimack Village District for their budget. And on Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, in the James Meshkola Upper Elementary School All-Purpose Room at seven PM, is the annual meeting for the district. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Paul. You weren't, you weren't lying.
I wasn't lying.
Alright, how about, while you're at it, the Highway Garage Update?
Well, we have some good news about the Highway Garage Update. We had a walkthrough today for punch list items. Our contractor, H.L. Turner, actually, the engineers went through the building with a, looking at, excuse me, everything from how the drawers and windows open to paints and things of that sort. They are compiling a punch list, so we're getting near the end. There are a couple items that are still outstanding in the facility. If you have a, if you drive by it, there's a big openings on either end for the louvers. Those were on back orders, they should be coming shortly. And the lockers for the locker room, men's and women's locker room are on, supposed to be here starting Monday, so we are looking that tomorrow is going to be a good day. They were testing the fire alarm system today. Tomorrow, the fire inspector and the building inspector will be walking through, and we're hoping that at least we can get a temporary CO, so that we can start moving some of the equipment and some of the other items and starting using some of the garage area and start moving the offices in. We have came through, we are right on budget. A matter of fact, we're a little bit, we got a nice surprise today where we, actually, the contractor, Turnstone Group, who's our construction manager, told us that we're about thirty-eight thousand dollars, that we can now put that thirty-eight thousand dollars in renovating, additional thirty-eight thousand dollars in renovating the existing garage. So we're right on track to renovating the existing garage for what we budgeted, about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, as well as completing the new Highway Garage Facility. Hopefully, we'll take ownership by the eighteenth, if not the eighteenth, then by the twenty-fifth of January. The committee met, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Chairman Rothaus, we are all under the agreement that at this portion of the game, let's move in and after the punch list items are corrected. It's, it's, it's not like we don't have a place that we are in right now, we're not renting a place, it's, this prolongs it by one week, but we want the building perfect when we move into it, so why not just wait the extra time right now? And that's where we're at with, with the project. We are also, everything's kind of fallen into place, the pumps are being replaced, the, you know, with the weather, the way we had that extended period of no snow, we were able to get some of the roof repairs done on the old garage, so things are falling into place quite nice, quite nicely, and we'll, should be one-hundred percent in the building by spring, both buildings by spring.
Thanks, Paul. Alrighty. Comments from the press and public? If you'd like to address the council, you can feel free to step to this mic or over here at the table. In seeing nobody, and what I'd like to do is, our item number one on recognition of a retirement of employee, Dean won't be here this evening, so I'd like to put that off, and if we could have the girls come forward, so they're, yes.
(inaudible)
Make a reference.
Absolutely, absolutely.
(inaudible)
Dean Kilkel, retired from the Merrimack Police Department just recently. He retired as the Detective Lieutenant, and I had the pleasure of working with Dean for thirty-plus years. I know he's not here tonight, but I, you know, I think I'd be remiss if I, I didn't mention him because of the years of dedicated service. Dean's from, his entire family is from this town. He and his wife continue to live here, and they have their son, Robert. Dean is a, was consummate community service police officer. He was involved in every aspect of the community, not only as a police officer, but he was involved in the high school and assisting with robotics and Boy Scouts and so forth. He was, what I would say, what we'd like to see from every, all of our police officers, involved in this community. He was also an excellent accident reconstructionist, and he worked on some major motor vehicle accident cases, and he's done some, he did some outstanding police work. I wish Dean luck. I know I'm going to continue to see him. The department, you know, as happens, we retire, we lose some good, good people, but we, we have others coming up to fill it. But I wish Dean good luck and thank him for the service, and thank his wife, Joanne, for the sacrifice that she put in, as Dean was away a lot.
Absolutely. Thanks, Peter. We are going to do that, you know, I'm going to read this into the record and all, I just wanted to get these young ladies up so that they could go home at a reasonable time. So, thank you. They did. So, that makes the first item this evening, the consideration of her donation to Watson Park. The council's to consider the acceptance of a donation from Girl Scout Troop Ten, Seven Sixty-Two, who would like to build and install an outdoor hopscotch court at Watson Park, valued at approximately a hundred dollars pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five E. and Charter Article Eight, Section Fifteen. If you ladies would like to come up over here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
(inaudible)
There you go.
We are in Girl Scout Troop One Zero Seven Six Two, and we would like to do two hopscotch to complete our journey at Watson Park. The agent of change journey is all about helping out the community. We can do this by building two hopscotch at Watson Park to make it more kid-friendly and entertaining for everybody. The reason we want to do this is because Watson Park has not much to do there. We chose hopscotch because most places in Merrimack do not have hopscotch. Hopscotch can, does not need any additional equipment. The ice rink and volleyball are only seasonal. Hopscotch can be used anytime unless there's snow on the ground. Where will we put it? We will put it behind the gazebo to the right-hand corner of the park. See the handout for a visual representation. We are going to paint twelve-by-twelve patio pavers and seal them so the paint stays on longer. Then we will dig down about two inches and place the pavers at ground level. The supplies will cost about seventy to eighty dollars. The way we will fund this project is from cookie sales last year and fall product this year. We will be able to make it right away because we don't need any additional fundraisers. We are planning on installing them in the springtime when the ground thaws out. Thank you for listening to our presentation.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Sage, Molly, Sarah, and there's four, but I see five names here. Who am I missing? Rachel. So, Alyssa's not here tonight? Oh, Rachel, okay, hi, Alyssa, I'm sorry. Ladies, thanks for making this presentation. I'm trying to remember, a couple months ago, we always get a lot of Eagle Scout presentations for doing stuff here in the community that, you know, makes our parks even better than what they are, and we're really happy when the Boy Scouts come to us for a presentation. And I publicly spoken, lamented, how come we don't have the Girl Scouts coming to make a project? So, sorry, I'm actually getting a little choked up over this. I apologize. I was so thrilled to see this, I really was. I was tickled pink that something as simple as a, as a hopscotch court, or a place where you, where you ladies can play hopscotch, I think would be an invaluable amenity to, to Watson Park. And I certainly want to go on record and say I support the project unequivocally. I only have one concern, and that's really the location, because I think the location is a little too close to where the woods are, and I would be concerned about safety in that particular area, so. I'm not going to, I'm going to vote for the project tonight, but I would encourage you to work with Director Casparius, and our Public Works Director Kyle Fox is here in the audience tonight. I'm sure that they could figure out a way where they can move that hopscotch court up just a little bit, so that it's a little bit more out in the open, so it's much more visible than where you're proposing to put it. That's really my only concern, and I, and I really only say that as a parent of a seventeen-year-old daughter. Okay? So, but otherwise, great presentation, and I'm really thrilled that you're offering this to make Watson Park an even better place for young ladies like yourself to come and visit and play. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Bill. Barbara?
So, Scouts, what badge are you working on for this project?
The Agent of Change.
Okay, great. I agree with Councilor Boyd. I was wondering if it could not be moved up to the other, the other pavilion that there is where the other tables are, because I, actually, I can see several projects here where we have multiple hopscotch courts, all lined up together. So maybe if you have more scouts coming on board who have to work on this badge, they can think about that as well. That way, maybe we'll have hopscotch competitions, but I thought it was a great idea. Good work, ladies. Thank you.
Tom?
Yes, location is key, and I would think you, maybe you should look at putting it where the ice rink is right now, because that's just a temporary spot. That ice rink won't be there next year, because we're moving the ice rink back more. So, that'd be a great location for it, where the ice rink, where the ice rink is now, I think would be good. But yeah, great job, great job. Like the colors, too.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Town Council accept cheerfully the donation from Girl Scout Troop Ten Thousand Seven Hundred Sixty-Two, who would like to build and install an outdoor hopscotch court. Hopscotch court.
Say it three times fast.
Yes, I did.
I didn't take it.
Take two. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Town Council consider cheerfully the acceptance of a donation from the Girl Scout Troop Ten Thousand Seven Hundred Sixty-Two, who would like to build and install an outdoor hopscotch court at Watson Park, valued at approximately a hundred dollars pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five E. and Charter Article Eight hyphen fifteen. Furthermore, then any documents that need to be signed, that the Town Manager be authorized, or her, or her proxy to do so, and that the final location, that the Girl Scout Troops work with Director Fox and Director Casparius to find a better location that addresses the safety concerns that we talked about tonight.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Boyd, second by Councilor Haley. There you go, hopscotch. Bill, would you like to address your motion? The motion speaks for itself, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Tom?
So, I don't want to throw any wet blankets on what I think is a great idea, but I'm curious about your selection of Watson Park versus Wasserman Park. And if you could talk about that a little bit, if you really want it to be at Watson Park, or if it might be better at Wasserman, where there's the Norma French Playground and some other things that might be more similar types of activities. Do you have thoughts on that, or?
What was the purpose of the call?
The change. To do. Make a change.
What you said in the very beginning?
Yeah.
You did say already.
Watson Park's boring, there's nothing there.
It's kind of what we-
That's pretty much what it is.
In the beginning, you mentioned that there was nothing to do at Watson Park.
Yeah.
So you're absolutely right. So that's why they chose.
So, age-specific, nothing to do. I mean, there's plenty to do there, but, but you're trying to find things for ten-year-olds? I'm, I'm just trying to better understand, because my, my initial thought, and again, I'm not trying to throw a blanket on it, I'm just trying to suggest that Watson, Wasserman Park is more of a family-friendly, active type of a park, and, and it would strike me that, that something there would be more appropriate, but I, you know, if, if there's a, there's a strong thinking, strong thought that Watson Park needs that, I mean it-
It was, the whole journey talked about, you would, the, I think that was the thought process at the beginning, we went and we toured Watson Park, and there was nothing, we didn't know about the ice rink or the volleyball. We're like, you're here. Because they formed all kinds of things, wanted to build a whole playground, and we narrowed it down to this one thing, that we could at least start small, and it's very doable for Girl Scouts, that would hopefully bring the community more to use that park, just to utilize it, where we didn't, we feel like Wasserman Park is definitely utilized within the community.
Right. The, with Watson Park, one of the stipulations of Mr. Watson was that it became, remain a passive recreation place. Now, I recognize that that was pushed a little bit with the ice rink going there, we saw that as a temporary, not a temporary, only one time type thing, but temporary, it's coming out every, soon as, yeah, seasonal, because it's, the park really isn't utilized in the winter otherwise, as a rule. And so, you know, so a playground, I, I don't think would have fit into it anyhow, it would, you know, right, because they, it just wasn't allowed, you know, Mr. Watson didn't want that, so, but that's, that's, you know, just my thoughts on it.
I don't want to, no. If we're going to play volleyball there-
No, no, I know.
You know, so-
That's what I'm saying.
I don't want to get into a whole other conversation.
No, no, and fair enough.
And so, following up, agreeing with you that that's a great place to have it, I would, I would suggest looking at having it out by the pergola in the front area if you can, just because it makes it a little more visible, puts it in where more family activities are happening, unless there's something that's specifically desired by your people to put it behind the gazebo.
We actually wanted it, I think, the ice rink is, and after going back and forth with Matt, he said the ice rink was going to be there, so he suggested this location and sent us this map, because we were very flexible about where we did put it, so. This is after talking to him, so.
I think Bill's motion kind of leaves it up to, to discussion between you and them to figure out a good location. I would think, you know, front over by the gazebo is where someone would be an easier place, if people are picnicking or something, they can play hopscotch and-
Yeah, as long as it's a platter area.
It kind of creates a synergy, but.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Right. Any further discussion, Nancy?
And the reason why you're getting, the reason why you're getting so many questions is that we're really interested in what you're doing, okay? So I think you need to be very happy with your presentation, you did a really nice job, ladies. I'm not sure at your age whether I would have been as calm.
No, I'm impressed.
I have trouble now, sometimes. So I thank you very much, and we're very pleased, and we thank you for what you're going to do.
Yes, a wonderful job, and I know I couldn't have spoken at ten years of age, there's no doubt in my mind. But, so, seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero. Thank you very much, ladies, we appreciate it. It was a good time.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Go to your home.
(applause) And by the way, for the families, this is going to be on the cable, do you know that? Okay. And I'm sure there are close-ups of the reading.
They watch it all the time, there's no doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, then we'll move back. This evening, we were going, Dean, Retired Police Lieutenant, Dean Kilkel, as we'd spoken about earlier, wasn't going to be able to be in this evening, but I wanted to, you know, offer his recognition, he's, Dean Kel, we're going to offer, Dean Kelly recognized his retirement after more than twenty years, twenty-nine years of full-time service with the Merrimack Police Department. And the plaque that we've gotten for Dean, it says, presented to Lieutenant Dean R. Kilkel upon the occasion of your retirement from the Town of Merrimack Police Department, in recognition of the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you have contributed for more than twenty-nine years. Your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the Town of Merrimack, and we wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty, July second, nineteen eighty-nine, to December twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, presented by the Merrimack Town Council and the Town Manager. And I echo Peter's comments, Dean is a great guy, his family's been involved in the community forever, and so, I, we wish him well, and his, and all his future stuff, but we'll get that to him. We have no appointments. Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the recommended changes to Charter Article Eight, Section Eight dash four, parentheses H. The operating budget of the Town of Merrimack Charter, all capital reserve fund deposits per RSA thirty-five colon five will be included in the operating budget for the town and be voted on as part of the operating budget warrant article. This was brought on because we were told that we were doing it incorrectly for a while, and so, we would like to, we're making this off, you know, this charter change in hopes to allow this to happen in our budgets like we've been doing. Paul, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some bad news. So, being proactive, I approached DRA with our legal counsel, Department of Revenue Administration. When you do a charter change, you have to approach three organizations at the state, Department of Revenue Administration, Attorney General, and Secretary of State. I figured the one who's really going to have heartburn over this would be Department of Revenue Administration. So I approached them, and the gentleman who came in May, who talked to us in May, has left the organization. So, my timing was a week later, if, you know, so I, we received comments from an attorney, and the attorney up at DRA had several questions for us, Carrie Anne and myself. I explained to him what we do in our process, how we present our capital reserve funds, how we've been doing it for my fourteen years, and prior to that, the twenty-three years of the finance administrator before me. He did not see that as proper. He took it upon himself to call the Attorney General and Secretary of State, and they all came up with the conclusion that to allow the Town of Merrimack to do this would be against state law. So, in talking with our legal counsel, they said we could fight this, because we are a town charter, and we are different. However, the town charter is a town charter with SB two, and SB two is a ballot vote in April like we do. So we are different than most town charters out there, and they said we could fight it. Definitely wouldn't happen this year. They're not going to allow the warrant article this year, no matter what we do. So we have to wait a year anyways to do this, if the council saw a fit. I asked our legal counsel to do some research of other communities that are town charter. Some of the town charter, Town Council former government, there are town charters out there, but some of the town charter, Town Council former government do not have SB two associated with it. They have other forms of Town Council responsibilities. I believe one has the old-fashioned town meeting, one actually is able to set the budget and, and vote on the budget themselves, and has authority for budget and contracts, and I think they have everything except bonding needs to be voted on, or something of that sort. So each town charter is a little different, and this is new territory for some of the people up there. But, long story short, sorry to be so long-winded, but long story short is that at this moment, this, this warrant article or this town, Town Charter Amendment is DOA. It won't go through DRA and already the attorney, it's, it would be one thing if it was just Department of Revenue that was against it, but him taking it upon himself to talk to the other two organizations as well, kind of, and them all agreeing at once and having a unit at front makes it a lot more difficult for us to proceed, so. Sorry to bring the bad news forward.
(inaudible)
Well, yes.
So, Paul, where does that leave us?
That leaves us with, we have to follow RSA thirty-five-five. For everybody out there, that's the capital reserve funding article. So it states that the RSA thirty-five-five, any deposits made into capital reserve funds either has to be put on a special warrant article individually or grouped together. So every year going forward, for all those deposits that we do into our capital reserve funds, such as infrastructure capital reserve, fire equipment capital reserve, communications, et cetera, et cetera, would have to be put on a separate warrant article, and the voters would vote on it. The other end of RSA thirty-five-five states that any withdrawals also have to be voted on, but since the Town Council is agents to expend, they can actually put in the budgets because you are agents to expend all the capital reserve funds, except one, which is the fire capital reserve fund, which we're fixing this, we're going to put a warrant article to fix that this year to make you agents to expend. So that leaves us with not only a budget warrant article going forward, but a capital reserve, either one or several, going forward each year on the, on the ballot.
(inaudible)
Well, it goes bonds, then the operating budget, and then order of dollar magnitude.
This year, we're doing the group, right?
We have not talked about that. We, we will bring that forward on the seventeenth, when we discuss that, how we want to bring that forward, do we want to do it in one big group? Or do we want to break it out into two separate groups? It, you know, we can talk about it then, how we're going to move that forward. You know, we can talk about it then, how we're gonna move that forward.
Barbara, Barbara gave me the, she asked my question.
The only comment, quick comment I want to make is that, the only concern I have is we're gonna have to be able to make sure to educate the public as to the ramifications, and basically help them understand the capital reserve funds are, are your savings accounts.
Does it affect the...
Basically. And that's why we've been able to do things, 'cause I can see intellectually how some citizens, depending upon their perspective, could say, oh, that could be cut easily, 'cause we're just not gonna be saving as much. And yet, we have to be able to help them understand that's why we're able to do everything we can do without the spikes and the, and the bonding, so it's gonna need some education.
But, right, but, but the other side of the coin is that our budgets, when we present them, one year it might be, you know, 22 million, the next year it's, you know, 32 million, because we might have bonding things showing up, so, I don't know, it's...
It's, it's, any of the case, it's gonna be helping them to understand...
Right.
The ramifications.
Yep, so, all right. Anybody else have any other questions, anything further? We'll move on.
Can we just say, open up the public hearing if there's somebody...
Since we...
Okay, and I'll open up the public hearing at 7:32, if anybody would like to address the council on this. Nope, seeing none at 7:33, I close the public hearing. Thank you, Paul. All right, legislative updates from our representatives, and, good evening.
It's nice to have Steve Reps here.
Oh, it's nice to be here.
It is a pleasure.
You can go first.
All right, I have a couple of updates. Is it, okay, now it's on. Just giving you our committee assignments, and I'm Representative Wendy Thomas. Representative Stack is on Fish and Game Committee. I, along with Representative Rung, are on Resources, Recreation, and Development. That's the committee that's going to be getting any water pollution bills, so it's good to be on that. And Representative Rung is also the clerk of that committee, so she's doing a great job there. I'm also, I've co-sponsored, I am a co-sponsor of Senate, Senate bill from Sharon Chanley to remove the toll booths in Merrimack.
Very kind.
Representative Stack is also a co-sponsor of that one. And then, you mentioned the meeting with, with Clark. We'll be going to that meeting, and he specifically has asked us to be there to respond to a request that we sent to DES for the data that was used to determine the MCLs as well as the rationale. There's some concern, they use data from Texas and Florida instead of data from, like Vermont and, and New York State where, where this contamination is actually happening. So we're gonna be meeting with him on Monday. And then Representative Murphy and I will be meeting next week separately with Police Chief Roy, and then with Fire Chief Courier, to discuss the opioid situation in Merrimack specifically, and to see if there's anything we can do on the state level. And then the last thing is that I was elected to the Hillsborough County Executive Council. I'm still getting used to these names and everything, but, but I'm on that, that council as well.
Hello?
Yep.
Okay. Representative Nancy Murphy, just wanted to update you too. Our committee assignments remained, as Wendy said, and I'm on the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee, which is awesome. We were very busy yesterday, we had 10 bills to hear. So I can see that's gonna be a very informative and educational committee. All, House bills have been filed, the Senate bills are due, signed off by tomorrow, and we're learning a lot about the difference between the House bills and the Senate bills, and we've discovered that on the, on a House, if we file a bill, we can have up to 10 representatives, including ourselves, and up to five senators. The senator files the bill, they can have 10 senators and up to five of us, which is why there's some bills that, like, I'm not on, that I've said, please put me on, but they said, we can only have five of you, and we put three Republicans on and put two Democrats. So, it's not for lack of trying, and we're, we're, we're trying to do things cooperatively and, and, you know, best, in the best interest of the town. I had the opportunity, I know, last meeting, Eileen talked about some of the issues that we may need some representatives to have some conversations with people up in Concord, and actually, we just left an event where we were fortunate to be able to sit down with the chairman of the Public Works in the Highway, John Flutier, and the vice chair, Mike Edgar, who actually was one of my cosigners on a bill that I, so, we discussed the Merrimack tolls, Continental Boulevard, and those kinds of things. And, though I know Eileen was gonna put together some, maybe a packet, sit down and meet with us, 'cause I just really want to have hard copies of stuff. He, but he would absolutely be interested. We said, oh, we have a lot of questions for you, a lot of, a lot of things that we need help with. And I specifically asked about why Merrimack, for the duration of my time here, as I always said, we've had tolls at every single, you know, on-ramp and off-ramp, and I, you know, we certainly understand 12 South was eventually dropped, but I said, it seems that Nashua has the benefit of coming here, you know, I mean, over the border, Massachusetts has the benefit of coming into Nashua and in here, not paying tax, not paying a, a toll, and, you know, I said, we live here, we can't go to work, or, you know, go grocery shopping without, and I said something, it seems wrong about that, and he actually agreed, and said, you know, that... So, a lot of history, we didn't have a lot of time, but I know where they are, and I know Mike, who was the vice chairman, so I see him a lot, so...
He said it had Senate...
Yes, so...
It's gotta be done this year.
So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know about that, but I would like to just have...
Hey, we all...
How realist, I used to work for the...
I didn't want to hear that.
I worked for the state. I, I just, if, if we actually have a chance to sit down maybe with, you know, Manager Kevin Allen, just get specifically what it is that we're asking for, it was a general conversation, and it was the gist of the thing, but just so that, you know, I mean, we only had really, we were sworn in on the 5th, and our bills were due on the 3rd, before we were even signed in. So, we could, there's no reason we can't start now too for the next round, and have everything worked out, so. Oh, wait, oh, one, yeah, one more question, is it about a...
Very simple, here's your talking point about exit 11. This is all you need to know about. For every 50 cents they collect, they expend 88.
And, we, that was...
I'm sorry, I thought it was, what number was it?
97.
97, I apologize, so for every...
Wait, so for every 50, 97...
For every 50 cents, for every 50 cents they collect, they expend 97.
But we were asked if that has to do with the cash aisle, or with the electronic aisle, or the whole thing?
Whole thing.
The whole thing. He was gonna look into that. We said, he said, is that the mand, or the, the automatic tolls? And we weren't sure, he said...
They should have that data already, 'cause they've given it to us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, just one, one of those things.
Unless they choose to forget it.
Yeah. The other, I had a question too, it's a question, maybe...
Thank you, Tom, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry to answer.
Oh, no, that's fine. Just, I know, the, the, I'm grateful that DES is coming here on Monday to, to meet with the public, whoever's available on a daytime, and there will be that public meeting that follows, but I know I had been concerned about, I had heard that there was a chance that the meeting was not gonna be held in Merrimack, and as Merrimack is the primary impacted site, it, to me, made no sense that we would be having a meeting elsewhere about an issue that primarily impacts Merrimack. And I actually, on the day of the inauguration, like, when I found that out, I went into the governor, and I said, he said, introduced himself, and I said, congratulations, anything I can ever do for you? I said, well, as a matter of fact. And I said, you know, I'm under, I've heard that there's maybe some scheduling conflicts, or, and I said, I'm not sure where the issue arises, but it certainly seems to me where Merrimack is, you know, a highly impacted community, far more than surrounding communities, and for, you know, for our residents, certainly should be able to have this meeting in a place that's much more easily accessible, especially older people, maybe in the evening, that don't want to drive out of town. And, so I said, the meeting needs to be held in Merrimack, and so, he said, okay, I'll make a phone call. And to hear it's been scheduled in...
Litchfield.
Yeah, yeah, which is where he lives, right?
No, it's not because of that at all.
No, what I'm saying, that's...
No, that's where he lives, but it's not because of that. It's because of the timing of the meeting. They want to hold the meeting the same time deliberative session is being held in this Town of Merrimack. So, we've asked them to move to Monday, they couldn't accommodate the, the month, well, they, they couldn't accommodate it here, and because Tuesday or the school deliberative session, it was because of deliberative session and trying to find a place for them to meet that could hold the numbers that they're looking for, they ended up going over to Litchfield and holding it in Campbell. We tried every opportunity to work with the school to get that meeting in here. And it wasn't for lack of trying on our, the town, the town part.
Oh, and I understood that, that was my, my understanding. Was there a reason that we couldn't have it another week? I mean, I understood it was like...
They, they, they being DES, said it has to be between the 7th and that following Friday, which, which would be the 11th.
We're gonna talk about that with Clark on Monday.
Yeah, it would be the 7th, between the 7th and the 11th, or the 12th, the 12th. The 12th, and we couldn't accommodate it here.
Right, right, and that was my understanding, that I knew there was a, there was a conflict, but, okay. Thank you for that, follow-up on that. And I, I think that's it, great, thank you. Thank you.
Barbara, would you answer?
Oh, sorry. Questions?
Yeah, Wendy, what is the Hillsborough Executive Council?
So Hillsborough, Hillsborough County is given a budget by the state, and so, it's, it's a bipartisan, if you're elected as a, as a legislator, you're on the Hillsborough County Committee, but then people are elected to the Hillsborough County Executive Committee. So we're gonna be, we don't establish the budget, that's done up at the state, but it's, people are not allowed to not spend their money, so, so it's, it's kind of moving money around within Hillsborough County only. So that's what, that's what we do.
I had one other question, I thought you mentioned that you were, you were following up on information about the tolls in Continental Boulevard, or some other street, or...
There was, there was a, I remember the reading the article, and I don't know if it was the Telegraph or the Union Leader, it was, it was a stipulation that Merrimack would have to take over the...
That was one of the comments that was listed, that...
Right, get rid of the tolls, and we have to take over...
They want us to take Continental Boulevard.
DOT, whatever, yeah.
It's a cutoff, or whatever, the part between Industrial Boulevard and 101A.
That's on, presently owned by the state.
Right.
I, I'm not sure that's part of Senator Chanley's bill, but I haven't, I, I need to look into it further, but I don't think she's included that in the bill.
But one of the things you have to keep in mind too, they have the transportation, the 10-year transportation plan, and I know initially it was there, I'm not sure if it was taken out, there was some confusion, but they were talking about moving the tolls, all tolls, take out 10 and take out 11, and put it south of 10, in Nashua.
Oh, yep.
Okay, so, they could play, my concern is they could play around, and they could say, yes, we're gonna close 10, you're gonna take over Continental Boulevard, and, oh, by the way, we're moving it down to 9, in the middle. And so, really, in the end, doesn't solve that, especially, and we have figures we can give you, what the cost would be to be able to take over the, the maintenance of Continental.
The discussion tonight, he, he was receptive to removing the, the tolls, especially at exit 11, and he was thinking they might have to increase the tolls, the, the major tolls that you drive through. So, so that's an option, is to remove those tolls and then increase it. And I said, what do you mean increase, and he said, like, a quarter or something.
And be prepared for fighting...
Yeah, I know, I know.
You're already getting there, I'm sure.
We're really getting good at that.
What, Paula, do you...
I just wanted to correct, the dates were between February 4th and 8th, that he was looking for, and we couldn't accommodate that. And Representative Thomas, you might want to talk to Pat Murphy, as well, about the opioids, because she sees it on the other end, with the organizations like Harbor Homes and...
Oh, sure, sure.
Things of that sort, so she sees that as also, on that end.
I will absolutely do.
As the funding for those to help support the opioid crisis for Merrimack residents.
Thank you, I absolutely will, set up an appointment.
Yeah, just, thank you, ladies, for being here and giving us the update. I'm just surprised we're even talking about Continental Boulevard. I thought we made it pretty clear that we wanted nothing to do with that deal, or...
We, I haven't heard anything about it. This is just the previous discussion, but I haven't heard anything up at the State House about it.
Not, not that you got me, but if they, if they were to bring it up, I think we made it pretty clear to Counselor Streeter, and then...
No, we, I think we were the ones that brought it up, we said, what we, our understanding was that, that was talking about the toll, and that, and it was a trade-off that we weren't interested in.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And just one other thing, on the, whenever you start talking about tolls, there's still the discussion that they're having of trying to move the mainline tolls at Bedford south into Merrimack, so that they can charge people tolls that are going to the airport, or taking the exits.
Yeah.
Obviously, that seems like a very raw deal, when you consider how many millions of dollars they spent building those toll booths where they are.
Right.
And now they want to rip it all out and spend another 10 million, putting in the high-speed pass-through lines. So just try and keep that in mind, 'cause I'm sure it'll be something that tries to slip in.
We're gonna keep an eye on this.
And he did mention that the highway funding was very low.
Yeah.
So, I think that's what they're, the, I...
Well, apparently, the toll booth money's usually been fairly high, and that's why they keep selling the toll business bridges, like the one to Main, which doesn't do the toll system any good, but it allows them to transfer, you know, 10 million dollars out of the toll booths into the highway fund and stuff like that, so...
Well, yeah, he told us that the, the funding for the highways is low, and then we came back and said, well, it's not fair that Merrimack funds it for you, so...
Good point.
We're on that.
I never thought I'd be talking about tolls tonight, but I can't help myself now. I just want to put it out to you that I really believe the tolls are the most inefficient, inefficient way to collect revenue to, to run our highway system. The gas tax is simply the best thing, and I understand electric cars are changing things, but that's the bottom line. It takes one or two or three people to administer it, the taxes collected, I believe, at the wholesale level, so you don't, you know, gas stations don't pay that, it's already paid for, and so, that's what they have to do. It's a, the whole thing is a fraud and a, so anyhow, you know where I am now.
The chairman was actually...
Almost considered highway robbery.
Highway robbery, absolutely, so...
Actually, he said, he did agree, with the, same suggestion he had, he said, you know, a couple, he said, we have a very low, compared to other states, he said, two or three cents on the gas tax would, would make a huge difference, so...
That's how we got rid of 12, though, if you'll recall.
Yeah.
Senator Bragg, and said...
They have raised it twice in the last four years.
Yeah. Well, in New Hampshire, it's a dedicated, it's a dedicated revenue, though. It only goes to the highways, and, and they, you know, so that, that is a good thing. Now, they figured out how to use it in safety, which I don't believe is appropriate, but that's, it, it's really, the focus is on our highways, and that's how it should be, so...
Well, we'll certainly keep you updated on that, as well as all of the other bills specific to Merrimack.
Thanks, thanks, great, thank you, I appreciate it. All set? Thank you. Ladies, thank you. Right, no town manager report. Oh, I like you in that seat. Yeah, no, nothing on the consent agenda, and so, under old business, the council will be presented with the rate data, and to determine the amount of bond that will be needed to be placed on the April 2019 warrant for our, sorry about that, for our wastewater infrastructure upgrade, Phase 3.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, with me tonight also I have Director Fox, and Waste Water Treatment Director Proci. They can come down and sit there, this has been a definite...
They're trying to hide back there, there's somebody hiding behind.
They're hiding on me, because they want to run out the door, but I'm gonna tell them it's definitely been a team effort, I told them I took all the tomatoes away from everybody, so, they're safe. What I handed out at the beginning of the meeting was two packets, I gave everybody the presentation, and then I gave everybody a memo. And I'm sorry that this was given to you tonight, and wasn't given to you a little bit earlier, but as of 3:30, 4 o'clock, we were still working on some of the, the writing and the graphs that you'll see tonight with it. With that said...
So is the ink dry, or...
It, it's dry.
Oh, okay, just making sure.
I'd like to go over, and, and the project. The project consists of what we call two phases. A Phase 3, which is for a new affluent screening building, upgrade to the main pump station, instrumentation upgrades, Sauhegan Pump Station upgrade, Thornton's Ferry Pump Station upgrade, and design of both the Phase 3, excuse me, and Phase 4 portion of the project. The Phase 4 portion of the project is upgrades to the headwork building, primary clarifiers, primary sludge handling, tank drain pumping, sludge holding tanks, secondary clarifiers, activated and waste sludge handling, chlorination building, compost facility, and additional instrumentation upgrades. That, that is the project in general, broken into the two phases, Phase 3 and Phase 4. And as you know, on November 15th, Sarita and Kyle came and gave a presentation, showed you the pictures of the buildings, and explained why this project, project was needed. But I just wanted for the viewers at home to get an idea of what we're talking about with this project.
Man, you just, we started out with Phase 3 and 4. The public needs to know Phase 1 and 2 was... phase one and two has already been completed.
Yes, phase one was.
And that's why we're starting at phase three.
Phase three.
Okay.
Phase one was completed in the 2005, 2006 timeframe for about $5 million. Phase two was just completed a couple of years ago in the tune of about $7 million, and that was upgrades to the plant and compost facility. Now, this is phase three and phase four as we, as we move forward. And this was projected when, way back in 2007, when we started talking about the fund balance, with the rate study report and things of that sort, that phase, phase one was done, paid with cash, and wastewater wanted to continue to pay with cash. And as we got more involved with the Wright Pierce study for rate setting and rate study, that's when we started to use some of bonding as, instead of raising rates for cash. We started using the bonding method to pay for these upgrades, and that's where we are right now, between phase three and phase four. The goal of the projects is to renovate the current facility, replace aging equipment with more energy-efficient equipment. So, and to provide stability to the wastewater treatment fund while trying to maintain as close to a $2 million fund balance as possible. The plan, we broke it down into three options for consideration tonight of the council. Option one is two 30-year bonds in back-to-back fiscal years. The first bond will be for $13.1 million and will be on, on the warrant in fiscal year 1920 at an estimated interest rate of 2.704% for phase three portion of the project we just talked about. Why I'm using an estimated interest rate, and it seems kind of, because I'm going 2.704, is that we are using state revolving fund money, which is money through the sewer fund, and every, every year in October, they set the rate. So because we'll be doing construction in the 2020 year, the rate might change. So that's why I'm using an estimated rate. That's the rate as of today. Hopefully, it stays constant over the next couple of years. But it's an estimated rate there. The second, the second bond, which is the back-to-back bonds, would be for $9,520,000 in fiscal year 2021 at an estimated interest rate at the same interest rate, and that would be for phase four of the project. Sewer rate increases, our sewer rate increases from the fifth lowest in the state would be to the seventh lowest in the state in the 1920 year out of 85 sewer funds out in the state. It allows for economies of scale during the bidding process, because we could bid both projects out as one instead of two separate projects, because we're, if you remember, phase three includes the design for both phases. So we could bid both phases out as one big project, get economy of scale with one vendor instead of having mobilization costs and maybe having two different vendors bid on, different vendors, meaning because of the size of the bonds. And then the fund balance would, in this option, does fall below the $2 million. You'll see that. Don't look ahead. The rate increases are 12% in 1920, a 12% in 2122, 12% in 2324, and a 5% in 202526. Our current rate is $242. In 2526, it would jump to $357. Overall, if you add them all up, it's a 41%, but because of the way it is, it, it's more than a 41% increase on the fund for, for these bonds. You asked where we'd fall under. As you'll see, in year 2223, we fall under that $2 million level, about $1.8 million. We go as low as $1.6 million, and then for a four-year stretch, we're under, and then we pop up at the end. That's why that 5% at the end is because the sewer rate starts going, the fund starts being recovered. One of the reasons why we drop below is because of the two bond payments, back-to-back. We hit the fund back-to-back, and we also have this $500,000 for Executive Park Drive. That is the relocation when they do the highway expansion of Route Three. Right now, we're using a culvert to run our sewer through. State law says now you can't run your sewer through culvert. We're waiting on the final design of the highway. They might be relocating that culvert further on, back to original location for the Sauhegan River. When the state does that, we have to pay for them to, we'll have to help them, because our sewer pipe is gonna run across. If we have to relocate our sewer pipe, it'll be much more than $500,000. So we're hoping that they relocate their culvert and not our, make us relocate our sewer. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We hit the fund that year, and we hit it for like $1.2 million from, in 2021 with the bond payment and that, payment of that.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, why is the $2 million minimum target fund balance important philosophically for this discussion? Philosophically, back in, I believe, 2007, the Town Council at that time got a presentation about the rate study that we always talk about with sewer from Wright Pierce. And at that time, they talked about a $2 million balance, which was approximately six months' operating cost of the fund if we needed to. So it was kind of a reserve for a six-month operating cost of the fund. It's still, to this day, is, is about $2 million. We run about anywhere from $3, $5 to $4 million in operating expenses over the years. So that's why we've been using that $2 million. Actually, in, I believe, you'll hear on Wednesday night from Sarita that they are looking to do a new rate study, because this rate study is now, is 12 years old. So they're looking to have some money set aside for Wright Pierce to do a new rate study, because number one, flows are different, state regulations are different in the wastewater treatment and things of that sort. So they're looking to come forward with a new, but that, long answer, sorry, is the, it was back in 2007. I think Counselor Harrington adopted, made the motion to adopt the rate study plan that was presented that night. I've read. I read, I read the minutes. I did my homework. I read some minutes for you.
I've been around that long.
Sorry. So as you'll see, and that, that was one of the things we talked about at the last meeting in, in November, was how does it affect, because we only had five years, how does it affect the out years? And what I did was I did a 10, looked at about 10 years, from 2017, 18 to 2027, 28, which is about a 10-year period, because other things could happen in that period. And it didn't make sense to go out the full 30 years of the bond because of costing, you know, this chart would just, it would be unrealistic, because it would just shoot straight up in the out years. And, and we don't know what, what some of the projects are gonna need to be, like with phosphorus and what other state regulations might come down, or federal regulations, the EPA come down in those outer years. So I figured a 10-year period is, is pretty good estimation of looking at the fund balance. And like I said, as you'll see, it curves down in between 2223 to 2627. The second option is to do one 30-year bond for $22,620,000 to be put on the 1920 budget at the same interest rate of 2.704%. Once again, the sewer rate increases from the fifth lowest to the seventh lowest out of 85 towns. It does still allow for the economies of scales during the bidding process. The fund balance does fall below $2 million as well. These rate increases are a 9% in the first year, a 12%, a 12%, and then an 8%. We're still at that number, what I told you, remember, $357 by the end of, of the raises in 2025, 26. Again, we still drop below the $2 million figure in years 23 through 26. And that's why at the end, we need that extra 8% to kick us back up over the $2 million. It's still a four-year period. The low point here is, is $1,587,000 versus $1,631,000. It's about $50,000 difference between the two bonds. Option three is two 30-year bonds. One bond would be for $13,100,000, phase three again, in the 1920 year at the interest rate of 2.7%. Second bond would be $12,600,000 for phase four, because we'd be pushing it out two years, 2122. Construction costs will go up. We will not get the economies of scale. There'll be relocation costs, things of that sort. Also, interest rates probably at that point will be in the 3.5% range estimated. Sewer rate still stays constant. We'll go from the fifth to the seventh lowest out of 85. Does not allow for the economy of scales, like I said. However, it would cost an additional $5.4 million in interest and principal cost. Fund balance in this account does fall below $2 million as well. The rates go from 9%, 12%, 12%, and then the last year would be a 12%. Once again, like I said, it's, it's not beneficial to the fund. In the final year, we'd be at $371 versus $357. As you'll see, we drop below the $2 million two different times during this. The first is when we pay that big, the first payment, and then the 12% kicks in. We go above, and then the second bond kicks in, and we go below for a couple of years. And then the 12% in 2526 starts bringing us back up closer to $2 million. Bonding comparison, option one and option two are almost identical. There's $4 difference between the two options due to rounding and timing. And option three, that's the $5.4 million difference. I've talked to Town Manager Cabanel. Town Manager Cabanel, actually, was sitting around the table, Kyle, myself, Sarita, and, and Town Manager Cabanel, and Town Manager Cabanel came up with this idea of back-to-back bonds because of the economy of scale and proceeding forward. One of the, one of our concerns is that if we put a $22 million bond on and it fails, now we're stuck scrambling to, if something happens to the plant. If we put the 13, so if we put a $13 million, it's the same thing. If the $13 million bond fails, it's the same, we're still scrambling. However, we think that due to, due to the need in actually breaking down the pump stations, which are a major need, because if you lose a pump station, it could be, it's not gonna be just $3 million for a pump station. It's gonna be $3 million plus-plus, because now you gotta do bypass pumping, and then you gotta get the design done, and you gotta do a lot of other things on it. So we are recommending, we're going forward, whether the bonds pass or not, with an increase either 12 or 9%, depending on option one or two, that, or three, that the council chooses tonight.
Question for you. How long can wastewater survive on less than $2 million in reserves?
Knowing that the project's being done, they can survive, because a lot of the equipment over the last.
Will be replaced.
Will be replaced between phase two, which happened a couple of years ago, the de-watering upgrade, which happened a couple of years before that. So there's a lot of newer equipment in the plant as, as we're going. The other thing is if something happens while the contractor's here, it's not gonna be, it'll still cost money, but it's not gonna cost as much money, because they're there. So they won't have to relocate and location and things of that sort. But we believe that for those four years-ish, the fund can survive. We just have to be, be proactive and, and make sure in budgeting and, and going forward and looking at the revenues. And we've been very, I, I mean, on these revenues, I'm on the low-end scale, you know, with, with a lot of things. The rate is not just the sewer rate, I should've said this before. The rate's not just the sewer rate for the consumer, the residents of town. It's also our industrial and residential, on our industrial and commercial vendors and our residential. There's three rate payers. We looked at what the cost for the residential would be, the best for the residential. We looked at both, what the cost would be, best cost for industrial and commercial. And actually, option one is better for industrial and commercial, and it's a break-even in the long run for residential. Yes, it does cost a little bit more money upfront for the residential, but, and towards the back end, it brings it back down towards.
Can we see what the rate would be for residential in addition to what, you know, commercial would be as well?
The rate, the rate for residential is.
This looks like it's residential.
Right there on the chart. Yes. That's the residential rate, yes.
So would commercial be paying more?
Commercial's still, Sarita can answer this question, but commercial still pays.
Because, I mean, they do have more going through the treatment plant than a house does.
But they do pay more, but it's based on the sewer rate of 264 next year.
Because here's my concern overall, you know, which is why I asked, how long can the facility go under $2 million, so that maybe we can pull that window out a little. I understand that our sewer, sewer rates are, you know, some of the lowest in the state, but from a household perspective, MVD is planning two rate increases over the next several years, which will account to maybe $100 by the time they're done. Now we have, we're, in addition of the sewer tax going up, again, over the next several years to the rate of maybe $100 or so. So if I'm living on the edge with my property tax as it is because of the increases, now I've got increases in my water and my sewer. I only have so much money coming in. So I'm trying to figure out, and when I look at this, is what can we do? If they can survive, sorry, guys, under $2 million for a while longer, maybe we can postpone that 8% increase to the $357 a little bit longer and just draw that out a little more. I'm looking for the best deal for the residential.
And granted, these, these are projected increases to make this work. For instance, if sludge, because sludge is part of this, if the sludge revenue is higher, that means we not.
It would be lower.
Will be lower, and we would look at it. It's not just an automatic 12% in 2020, 2122. We look at everything. We look at the fund balance. We look at going forward when we set these rates. And, and I've been, I've been, I really got an education this year, jumping into this. Prior years, we've always had the discussion about where's the rate going, what do you have, what do you have in the future, kind of deal. So going forward, these are projected rates of 12, 12, 12, and 5. It could be that, it could be lower than that. It all depends on our revenue. If we have, if, for instance, like I said, sludge, our sludge is going up. Compost is another factor. We sell compost. We have industrial, we have residential. This doesn't, this does not, we have sewer connections. Sewer connections, as you know, they just did that big sewer project at Greenfield Farms. We're gonna be collecting a lot more money in sewer collections. That plays into the, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it plays into the fund balance. And it affects the rates going forward. There's a lot of unknowns that we could not, if I did that, this would be total guesstimation. We might as well take, I hate to say this out loud, but a dartboard and throw a dart at it and say, this is where we're gonna be. You can't really do that. So we use what we knew, and we went forward with what we knew. There's a lot of other things that could happen to this rate as we go through. If we lose a big industrial business, like years ago, we lost Nashua Corp. That brought the sewer revenues down. So things of that sort. So there's a lot that goes into setting these rates. This is a snapshot in time, as of today, looking at last year, what we collected last year, looking at the budget for this year, and then trying to project this 10 years forward. So, and, and I do, I do understand what you're saying with rates increases and, and taxes increase and things of that sort. We, we are, we have been trying to be as stringent as possible. And matter of fact, they, they can tell you, they, I, we went back to the drawing board, what, five times, six times? I drove them, I drove them crazy, because I'm like, no, we can't do that. No, we can't do that. No, we can't do that, so.
Paul, I guess now, to me, option three doesn't seem like an option to me. So I, you know, you guys have been doing the research and the town manager. What's, I, I'd love to hear your recommendation on options one and two.
Option one is the one that we would be recommending.
Collectively, you all recommend option one.
Well, that's the town manager's option. That's, that's the option that I, I would recommend, and I believe that's the option they would recommend as well.
And the biggest reason is, in fact, because it's so important to get that first part of it done.
Correct.
So that we don't have some little environmental catastrophe, that if it went up together and it lost, now we're in a bind. We, and so, you know, the other one, it would be good to go and do them all together, but I think. And so, you know, the other one, it would be good to do them all together, but I think that is the best way.
Right. And, and we do, I didn't put this slide, sorry. I didn't put a slide on there, but we, we are, we, meeting Sarita and Kyle, are going to go out and do a, do, do, do the presentation to activity groups such as the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, the Senior Center, the Chamber of Commerce, if they'll have us. Whoever that will have us, they're willing to sit there and talk to them, and talk to them about this, and, and the cable TV programs and things of that sort.
Touch a truck?
They, they could do a door and touch a truck, but that might be after the vote. So, they don't want to touch that kind of truck either.
It's a little different kind of truck.
So, but-
That was a highway garage, I don't know.
But, but we are, we are looking at whoever, and if you can think of a group that, that you'd like them to present in front of, they'll be more than happy to do that. And really, we're looking at which plan, which option the council's going to look at and, so we can start. They want to start. They want to start this week, next week.
Paul, Barbara, it's, you know, question, you know, being underneath that $2 million threshold, you know, if there were a little more time to stretch it out. The big impact that we've talked about is the industrial, commercial users. I mean, it's an impact for residential, obviously, as well. But, you know, those, those bigger payments coming out, that's a large impact for them. And I didn't know if stretching it out another two years, would that make it so it would be a gentler climb, or is that too much of a hazard to?
It could be, I, I, all right, option one, I looked at the same nine, 12, 12, eight. When I did that with option one, the-
Stretching out, you mean?
Stretching out the strategy as, like we did with option two. It drove the, it drove the fund balance or in that position of the account much lower than I felt comfortable at. It drove it down to about $1.3 million in the account. I did not feel comfortable with that. At $1.5 million, I feel comfortable that we could survive if, if there was a issue in there. But driving it down that extra $200,000, that shortens everything up, you know, with, with everything. There's a lot of things coming down the pike with the water and wastewater, with PFOA, PFOX, the Gen Xs and things of that sort that we were looking at as well. So, if, if we go below that, the 1.5, 1.6 threshold, I'm not as comfortable with.
Okay. No, thank you. Bill.
I agree with Council Haley. I'd like to see another option that mitigates the rate increase for sewers on our residential neighborhoods. Because I was at their meeting with MVD, and I was appalled that they kept putting off that rate increase. They kept putting it off, and putting it off, and putting it off. Now, we're looking at potentially the residential community getting, getting double whammy, not just on, on water, but on sewer. And that's not also taking into consideration some of the hookups that are going to occur on that construction off a, off a wire road as well. The, the development that's going, that's potentially going to go in there, some of those people in the, in the abutting neighborhood, you know, are going to be, going to be hooking up to sewer. So, there's going to be an additional hookup charge that potentially those neighbors are going to see. So, that's a lot of money for our residential users to be absorbing all at once. So, I'd, I'd like to see an option four that, that, that at least addresses spreading out the, the particular rate increase so that at least we're, we're mitigating this and we're giving some type of, of a buffer to, to the resident, to the residential community on, on this rate increase. I mean, it, I support the project. We need the project. I mean, that, that's, that's really not a discussion. The question is, is how, how best can we, you know, be able to draw out that rate increase so that we're not, you know-
Killing people.
Killing people or penalizing people, however you want to phrase it. Thank you.
The, the additional sewer connection fees we're getting right now are from existing homes. I understand that. That project that's going on down the road, it will be in the price of the home that they're buying. So, that's going to be, unless they're paying cash, that's going to be factored in as, as a cost of the house. And I understand it's still $2,000 charge extra for connecting to, to the town. But that is down the road included in the price of their home, whereas somebody on Brenda Lane has to come up with it. I just want to make that difference between the two. It's the existing homes that are connecting now versus the future, new construction homes that, that are connecting. It's still the $2,000, and I understand that.
But that's what I meant, Paul. That's what I meant, was the existing houses, not the new construction, but the existing houses.
I don't, I'm not following how this has fallen into place. The $2,000, is that being increased in the rate change?
No, no. $2,000 stays flat. Nothing changes there. It's just the number of people who have to connect.
Correct.
But in having to connect, there, there's waivers available as long as your system is-
Correct.
So, so I would suggest that people should look into that, because I've always felt that they have a good working system. There's no need for them to go to the expense and the upgrade of connecting into the sewer. If their system's bad or beyond 85 or whatever it was, I don't know the rules at this point, but that, that's a, it's a lot cheaper than connecting, redoing a septic.
Redoing a septic.
Right. So, so I don't, you know, for me, it's the rate increase, the percent of rate increase that is, is the impact that I thought we were talking about.
Of the sewage.
Yeah, right. And that's where, trying to stretch it out, I understood what your logic was, and I'd like to agree with it, but, you know, the concerns over the one point, you know, the $2 million threshold and going that deep.
Right.
So, I get that a lot.
We can, we can definitely stretch it out.
Yeah, but it's going to cost us more if we stretch it out.
And, and the fund's not going to be able to recover as quick as, if you stretch it out.
Can I have one to say something? It won't cost more. It'll just, the fund will go a little bit lower in the dip, but it's coming back out the other end, right? And then what happens?
Yeah, but what happens? You know, after 10-
I mean, is it climbing? You didn't show us past the five or 10 years. I understand that.
It is climbing, but, you know-
So, are you going to have a rate reduction?
Potentially, potentially, we could have a rate reduction. You know, it, there's a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of factors coming in.
I mean, the whole issue is that we need to spend a slug of money right now-
Right.
To maintain, manage, and control our wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
And somehow, we have to get that funding.
Right.
So, what happens if we spend nothing? What will happen if we don't do any bonds, nothing?
If we do not do any bonds or anything, we, we run the risk, like anything else. We run the risk of, of catastrophe with one of our major pumps, Thorntons Ferry, Salhegan, or the main pump station failing.
And that'll cost us a lot more than $22 million, potentially.
I, yes, potentially.
I mean, obviously, we're doing hypothetically a lot because we're going up to 2052.
Right.
So, I mean, yeah, okay.
Kyle?
I just wanted to kind of echo that point. While we do understand, and we've spent since November 15th going over the numbers and trying to be as thoughtful as we can to the rate payers and, and the fund at the same time, the, the most important takeaway that I, that I have to, have to say is the, the project we're talking about is replacing equipment that's 48 years old, long beyond its useful life. We, the, the risk of putting it off, it, it could be catastrophic. It, it just could be. I, I don't speak in those terms often, but this is a case where it could be. And I, I just can't stress that enough.
Cal, what's your opinion about having the fund balance like at 13 for a longer period of time rather than 2 million? 1.3 million?
Again, it's all about risk. I think if we get, if, if we go the two-bond route, where the, the difficulty there is we're asking voters to pass bonds in back-to-back years. If both bonds pass, I agree with Paul, we could go down to a million and a half because we're going to have money, we're going to have a contractor in place. We can, we can respond to anything, any emergency failures pretty rapidly.
Because they're there.
And we'll have a design in place to, to renovate to. Not having the bonds in place is a scary thought for us.
That's regardless, though.
Right.
No matter what route you take.
Right, right. And, and as Paul stated, we believe it's important, whether, whether the council decides to go forward with the project or not, that we need to do the rate increase, whatever level that may be, just so, you know, we're in a position that we can either A, fund the project on a designed basis or respond to an emergency basis.
So, so if you went option one and you had 13 million passed, right? So, you can get all the majors done with the 13 million, so you're not going to have catastrophic effects then.
The whole, the whole 22-6 is major.
Right, but, but I'm saying-
The, the 13.1 is the most critical items.
Right.
Every drop of, so there's three pump stations we're talking about, the two outside ones and then the main pump station. The two outside ones, I think, take about 75% of our flows from, from the, the system. Every drop of wastewater goes to that main pump at the, at the pump station. Those are, of, of the whole project, those are the four most critical parts, but they're all very important.
So, hypothetically, you could do the 13 one, that passes great, and then say the second year, the nine doesn't pass.
Right.
We can always put that nine on the next year.
Right. And presumably, as, as someone just stated, it would be more because the further you go, the inflation kicks in. But yes, absolutely.
But the criticals would be done.
Yeah, it would look more like option three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. I guess, what's the pleasure of the council?
Do we need to, we need to make a motion on this?
You're looking for that tonight. Looking for some direction tonight, yes, please.
I'd make a motion that we, the council moves to approve and go with option one.
I second.
Motion by Councilor Albert, second by Councilor Harrington to move option one. Would you like to speak further of your motion?
You know, these, this is an important service within our community, you know, to have wastewater and to take a risk. And the amount of money we're talking, I'm not comfortable with. And I, you know, I, I agree with Barbara and Bill that, you know, we don't want our rates to go up. We'd love to keep them the same, but this is a five-year, slow, gradual impact, and we top out at $115 over what it is currently now. So, you know, unfortunately, you know, I think that's the cost of doing business at this point, and this is, this is something very important. So, that, that's where I come from on my motion. Thank you.
May I add something as a second?
Yes.
The other thing I think we also have to keep perspective on is that we are the fifth and seventh lowest in the state, which means that we've been very frugal up to now, and cost has always been a priority in the functioning of our wastewater. And therefore, and it would be maintained, my understanding, even with this increase. So, I think personally, I'm voting with faith that I don't like it, but I think they've done what they can do. That's all. Can it be better? Perhaps. But you're talking about a year or two difference in terms of the increase. What are you talking about, $10 or $15 from one year to the other? Maybe. I don't know. But I, I guess I'm verbalizing my faith that they've done the best job they can do in terms of perspective, and that option one reflects that. And I was one that previously agreed with the, with the 20, doing it all at once. But that was based upon a lot, the cost being much more when we separated it up. Now that it's one year after another, that's been minimized, and that takes away my major argument and the idea that passing in a two-tiered will probably have better success than the 20 all at once. But again, I'm going to stress again, we have to be able to go around to the different places, and there probably should be a counselor going with them to be able to understand our vote and how it impacts other things and the philosophy and of the vote of the council. And bring up MVD and all that, too, and all that. But it's part of the picture. But remember, we, MVD should have raised their rates a hell of a long time ago. So, we cannot make our decisions based upon their poor decisions.
And also, I think the conversations that are had for these educational moments should include the discussion of the next bond. It should never be left out. It should always be the same conversation. Barbara?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying that we don't need the bonds and we don't need the work. Absolutely. I, but I always, I feel like, and I'm going to get preachy, sorry, but, you know, I just, I'm looking at the whole picture and what that means for, you know, the average Joe, you know, who is making $50,000 a year and, or the retirees as we are.
Which we are.
Who only have so much money coming in. And if I remember from the last time we talked about this, you know, the rate is not based on how many gallons of water you're using. So, the guy who lives in a one-family house with two people in the house are paying as much as the family with eight or 10 in the house, who are using a lot more water and draining a lot more water. I'm not sure yet if there's a commercial rate in there for the business, so that businesses like our friends at AB or-
They pay a lot more money. They don't pay $300.
Thank you.
They pay, and Anheuser-Busch pays between 1.8 to over $2 million. Over the last three years, they were 2.1, 2 million. This year, we have them at 1.9 million that, that they put into the sewer fund.
Kyle's going to add some information.
You got the numbers, Kyle?
I do, yeah.
There you go.
So, they do. So, as you mentioned, the residential user pays a flat fee, no matter the use. All of our commercial and industrial users pay per gallon, and the current rate is $3.41 per thousand gallons. And AB has their own rate, so they're, they're in a separate category from the rest of the industrial and commercial.
Thank you.
Because, because they push out a lot more solids, I believe.
Yeah, a lot more stuff.
Yeah, correct.
Right, where they've been able to get water out of their process.
Which we need.
Right. The concentration of their flow is much stronger.
We need it for the compost.
Right, which is the reason for the variation.
Well, we need it to be able to have the wastewater function, because if we didn't have that, if my understanding is correct, it would be, the wastewater would not efficiently run. We need a certain amount of volume. Does that make sense?
The, the plant would run, but if, if we didn't have them, they're our largest customer. As, as when Nashua Corp left, we felt that. If, if AB left, the, the revenue would have to be made up, so the rate would basically double.
But wouldn't the efficiency of it, of what you're working?
Sarita can speak better to that.
My understa, I thought my understanding was, they, they also serve a purpose in terms of the volume, because we're far from capacity, right?
So, the plant is designed for 5 million gallons per day. Right now, we are between 1.8 and 2.3 million gallons per day. That, that's how we run, of which Anheuser-Busch is about 600,000 gallons per day on average. They will go to a high of about 800,000 gallons per day. So, I think what you're talking about is when the plant was originally designed, it was designed for Anheuser-Busch, and we had a different style of operation, and we absolutely needed their load to operate.
Okay, maybe.
So, we've since changed the style of operation, and we wouldn't be as impacted per se. In other words, we would still meet our permit limits, so on and so forth. The economy of scale that would be in place would probably not be there. So, a pump can only run at, it can be turned down so much, and you would, you would have a minimum cost associated with it. That would not be the same as the, the lack of that water. I don't know if I made sense, but.
I understand. Yeah. Thank you.
I also want to say that it isn't a 12% 1920, 12% 2021. It's a every-other-year rate increase. So, it's a two-year period. Every, every one is a two-year period. So, it's a total over an eight-year period that we're going from 242 to 357. So, it's over an eight-year period. So, it isn't that one jump, boom, we're at 357. It's over those eight years.
Let's call a question. Go ahead.
Thanks. Go ahead.
I think it's really important for us to understand, too, that we're not, and I'm losing my thought real quick, but here.
Sorry.
We're not, where was I going with this? We're not looking at a fixed rate increase. You, you've alluded to the fact that you're going to look at and monitor the fund balance and work to keep it where you can keep it. I mean, this option one keeps it as high as 1.6 million. Depending upon the cost of that project with the highway widening and when that comes through, because we're not even sure when that's going to happen at this stage, that could impact and affect this. So, that could impact or affect your 12% that, that year as well. So, we're not looking at fixed known numbers. We're looking at a fluid thing where we need to raise 20- need to raise twenty-two million, twenty-one million, somewhere in that area, for the sewer plant upgrades, just in order to keep the thing running correctly and not breaking down. So I think we need to focus on that, and, and whether we raise it all at once or raise it in two different steps, I don't think it's going to make a serious impact. I don't know what argument people would have, one way or the other. It's not going to hit our property tax rate, so we're not going to get that issue across the board that, you know, you're bonding the highway department, now you're bonding the sewer, and now you want to bond the, the public safety building.
Correct.
And we've got interest on all these bonds and stuff. The wastewater treatment fund is a self-supported fund, it's paid for by the sewer users.
Right.
The rate users, rate payers, but it's not going to show up in the property taxes, so it's kind of contained and controlled.
That's why they need to understand it.
They need to understand it, but the entire town needs to understand that this is an asset of the town, we can't simply just ignore it, we can't say no because we don't want to play the game. So the rate payers need to really understand it, but everybody needs to understand it as well, and we need to collect that money to be able to do these upgrades, and if one or two of them fails, and we have to push it out a year, we're looking at losing the advantage of the, of the bidding it together, we're potentially talking about four to five million dollars in costs for delays, for lack of being able to bid them together, so I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into this, way beyond the sewer rate increase. So I think it's critical that we support this, we all come forward with a positive note on it, and, and help people to understand the impacts to the town. That's, that's our job, so, anyway, that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you, Tom.
Can they call the question?
Nothing further? Yes. All those in favor of motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, seven-zero-zero. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Are you going to stay there?
Council Koenig, thank you for clarifying.
No, did you want to?
I was thinking five years. In eight years, I think it's now, it's, it's a little bit less painful. I was not paying attention to those, I really appreciate the clarity, so, so thank you.
Didn't see the white lines.
I thought it was over eight years, not...
Oh, okay. All right, now we're going to move back in order under new business, item number two, the council to consider the ratification of a tentative collective bargaining agreement between the town and the IAFF Local 2904 firefighters, Paul and Eileen and staff.
Sharon.
Sharon on her own.
Paul, Paul, Eileen and Sharon is your negotiating team.
Put together, came to, came to this tentative agreement, which includes a four-year contract from July first, two thousand and nineteen, to June thirtieth, of twenty-three, two percent wage adjustment in each of the, those four years, and the agreement also includes other small benefit and language changes, specific to the needs of the group and the town, and Paul, if you'd like to highlight these items?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. We came to a, a tentative agreement with our firefighters' union for a four-year contract, wages are two percent per year for the four years, there are some small, we did a lot of cleanup language, there were some references, the Board of Selectmen, things of that sort, so we did a lot of cleanup language that we felt that we needed, that hasn't been looked at in past years, so we cleaned up a lot of the language that we had with them. The cost in the first year would be fifty-three thousand dollars, fifty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-eleven dollars. The cost in the second year is sixty-two thousand, five-ninety-six. The cost in the third year is sixty-five thousand, two-eighty-one. The cost in the fourth year is eighty-one thousand, six-eighty-nine. One of the reasons for the large jump between years three and four is the steps in the contract. There, to be in the, being that, we hired nine new firefighters last year, so by the end of the contract, they'll be moving up to being five years on the job, and there's some master firefighters and steps included in there.
But the other side of that coin was, you saved a lot of money on the pension side, correct?
Correct.
Sorry, the other, for the record, the other side of the coin is that we've saved a lot of money on the pension side because we have all these new offices.
Correct, that is correct, so...
And the impacts, a couple cents a year?
I believe it's five cents a year, uh, no, two cents a year. Two cents a year, I think it's seven cents for the whole contract.
Paul, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this contract was negotiated without the use of any legal counsel?
The, the, there was not a lawyer sitting at the table.
Okay.
I can't say we did not use them, because, we always run, because it's a legal document, we always run some of the language changes that we want to make by the, the legal lawyers, but they weren't sitting at the table and negotiating for us.
Yes.
It was Eileen was the lead negotiator, myself and Sharon supported her.
And in doing so, we significantly saved legal costs, correct?
Correct.
And I commend Eileen and the staff for that, too, because I think that's what we asked when we discussed legal fees in the budget last year, and I commend her for doing that and continuing to do it, so...
And as well, the letter, the correspondence that we received from the union was just, you could tell there was a good working relationship going through.
Absolutely.
It appeared to me anyhow, and that letter was a very nice piece of correspondence, and I appreciated everything that they, that they offered and did, and, and the work of, you know, you and the staff.
Thank you.
It was really nice.
Finley, I'd like to move the town council ratify the tentative agreement reached with the IAFF Local 2904 firefighters' union, which includes a net cost of fifty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-eleven dollars in the first year, so the tentative agreement may be put on the warrant for vote approval at town, at the town meeting, and would also like to thank them for being so cooperative with this agreement.
Second. Motion by Tom Thornton, seconded by Barbara.
Give it to Barbara.
Billy Boyd, seconded by Bill Boyd. Thank you, Barbara. Any further discussion on your motion, Tom?
No, I, just to reiterate what Pete says with Eileen, and what she does with the contracts and the unions, and she does a really good job.
Thank the firefighters' union, that was one heck of an email, I was, it was beautifully written, and I think it, it illustrated that there was a very strong working and cooperative relationship to, to get this agreement done, especially over four years, that's very impressive, so thanks to the IAFF 2904.
And thanking them for the four years.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All righty, any further discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven-zero-zero.
Get your dollar.
That's wonderful, next on the agenda is the approval of the December twentieth meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Thursday, December twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, town council meeting minutes be approved as presented.
Second.
My counsel, Boyd, seconded by Pete Albert. No changes? Should I drag my feet, is there a contest over there? Barbara?
Oh, I wasn't even looking.
I thought there was a time thing going on here.
Nope, not down here.
I would just like to say publicly that, and I've said this to Sharon and the team in the office, that whoever does the minutes does such a fantastic job.
She really does.
You know, I have sat through other meetings where, you know, the first twenty minutes is to get the correction to the minutes, and the fact that I, I'm reading all these pages and I only found one thing, which is on page two, and it's line thirty-one, it's not detected, Michael Murray, it's detective. And that was all I had.
In point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you could direct Council Haley to look at page seven, line twenty-six, you'll see that the minutes were submitted by Dawn McMillan, and I'm sure she, like all of us, appreciate the work that she does.
Yes, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Excellent, thank you, Barbara. With that correction, see no others, I'll call the question, all those in favor, the minutes of December twentieth, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven, five, five-two-zero, five-zero-two, Pete Albert, Tom Koenig, in the abstention. Thank you. Comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the council? Tom?
Me, if you'd like. The planning board met yes, not yesterday, the day before yesterday, Tuesday.
Well, you've had a busy week.
It's been a long week, yeah. It was quite an extensive meeting, there was a lot of discussion on the Edgebook project, project down in the south part of town, where they want to put in multiple multifamily units and an assisted living facility. There was discussion on Flatley's property in the north part of town, we extended the acceptance of the Neighbor Works program in the vicinity of Horseshoe Pond, they've gotten their funding, but they didn't get it quickly enough to be able to meet their deadlines for the acceptance of their project, so they're expecting to finalize their funding this year early, and get some state approvals, and be able to move forward with that project. There were a couple of other small things, but one of the things I wanted to bring up was that there was a discussion of, and I didn't bring it with me, I think it's House Bill, can you help me, Bill, the one that you were talking about with respect to the...
Oh, yes, hold on a second, I will find that for you.
There's, there's a House bill to, to establish a...
It's a Housing Advisory Board.
Housing Advisory Board, much like the Labor Relations Board or something like that.
Right, thank you, I had emailed Eileen about the Housing Advisory Board, and asked that we had our attorney look at it, because I, I really think it's, it's really something we should pay attention to, because it dramatically would impact our ability regarding zoning and being able, basically, it would be a dedicated three-person board that would be responsible for reviewing appeals coming out of the planning board and the zoning board, it would not go to the Superior Court, so, and, and the three, and the three members of the advisory board, and I'm trying, I can't even find it right now because I'm too busy talking, that would, basically, would be, would be gubernatorial, gubernatorially appointed, subject to confirmation by the executive council, and I...
So there were a couple of funny things about it that came out in our meeting at the planning board, one is that the, the alignment of these three people, one has to be a retired judge, one needs to be an engineer, and one had to be another specific function, which seemed kind of odd to try and, and limit it to that, and then be able to find people that want to do this, because it's considered part-time, twenty hours a week maximum, the salary is not defined, they put a fee to file an appeal of five hundred dollars where the Superior Court is two and a quarter, but there's some other things in the language of the bill which just made it very untenable, in my opinion, they could only hear one appeal at a time, and would have to adjudicate that appeal before they could take the next appeal, and in theory, the way it's worded, you know, four or five people could just line up with appeals that they all filed in twenty days, but one at a time would be dealt with, taking anywhere from thirty to ninety days to deal with, and could, you know, delay somebody if they're trying to get it passed, if the appeal is going against the person. If the person is trying to get something passed that the planning board or zoning board didn't agree with, then there's other issues where it takes away local control, because now we've got these three people, instead of our current judicial system, defining how things are going to go, and it just, it seems like it puts in a lot of baggage that's not necessary. The system that we have today seems to function fairly well, it allows us to have some control, and typically, the judicial remands it back to the board, and the board has some input still, whereas this committee could simply accept or pass it without remanding it back, and therefore, things could go forward without the planning board having a say in it.
Why, who, what was the rationale, rationale for the establishment of this, House Bill?
So, it's House Bill one-oh-four, and the rationale, and I sent an email to Finley and Tom, and I'll tell you what, I will...
Because I remember reading up on it as well.
I'll send, I'll send...
If my memory was correct...
And I had sent this to Tim Thompson, what I'll do is I'll forward this to everybody so that you can see the trail, and it has all the links, but there was a union leader editorial, there was an article that was written in The Patch by Jane Aiken from Bedford, but the pro came from Tom Taylor at the BIA, and basically, they're, they're saying that this impacts economic development.
That's right, and it really, that's right, the BIA.
You know, and, and the, the article that he submitted to the union leader, the fact that he was quoting Frank Capra in the first paragraph, just to be very candid with you, kind of, kind of set me over the edge, because, you know, it's, in my eyes, this is, this is a scheme to circumvent local control, plain and simple, period, and we have adjudicatory process in place that work, and I think all of us here, you know, we've been on the, we've been on the losing end of, of stuff that's come out of the ZBA and the plan, but we've been on the losing end, you know, okay, we made our case, we, we lost our case, and I'd rather lose the case in front of a judge, instead of in front of, you know, three political appointees, who like, as Council Koenig alluded to, they're going to take their sweet time, and, and quite honestly, it's, it's not going to be, it's not going to be done as a matter of law, it's going to be, you know, you know, whining your finger and figuring out which way the wind is blowing on a particular issue.
See what you started this discussion, Tom.
So, well, actually, I, I gave it to...
No one even knows what you're talking about.
But I think my, my thing...
Planning board is effectively not in favor of moving this forward, and that's, that's all I was going to share.
Right, so what I was going to say, there's, nothing has been done with it, and I'm happy our representatives, yes, that they're aware of it, I had wanted to get a legal opinion, I've got, and I hope Tim doesn't mind me saying this, but, you know, Tim, Tim has his opinion, is that he opposes the bill, and I think all of us oppose the bill, but I wanted us to have this on the agenda for the, for the twenty-fourth, so that we could publicly take a position on this bill, and actually get, get our legislative delegation involved on this, because this really, you know, this impacts all communities, not just Oz, this, I mean, this, I mean, you talk about the Winchester system and the Chester field, you know, it's...
Let's, we should have it as an agenda item.
Right, and I asked, and I, like I said, I, when I, when I read this on January second, I, I asked Eileen to, to, to have, have it on the council agenda, but, you know, have...
Yeah, you would say that.
Having a turn to work is impatient.
All right, are we going to continue this, because this we should do as a discussion, but it's up to you.
No, this is going to be a quick note to Paul. Paul, can we send, if, if, once this gets on the agenda, can we invite all our representatives to this, you know, and whoever attends, attends, but let's invite them and put them on notice that we're going to discuss this, so that, you know, I guess they'll, they'll, they can maybe help out, or they'll know where we stand, and they can, they can take notice of it, and do what they need to do with the statement.
Or, or we might have a letter sent to appropriate people and all.
And, and just to let you know, I actually engaged Jane Carr, who's the executive director of the Nashville Regional Planning Commission, and he indicated to me that the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority is supporting the bill, and there actually are a couple commissioners on the NRPC that are supporting it, but the, the New Hampshire Municipal Association has not weighed on this, but it's something that he's agreed that the NRPC is going to discuss at a commission level at some particular point, but I'd like, as a body, to get ahead of it and publicly, you know, at, once we've vetted it and looped the people into know to, to take a position on it.
Thank you, Bill, and Tom.
And I actually had...
That's all the trouble I want to make to this point, thanks.
Tom Thornton.
I'll let him finish, because I'm going to motion order.
Oh, well, no, because I would, I'd like to bring something to everybody's attention, yeah. Bill. I just, I wanted to take the opportunity, I am very pleased to announce that Senator Margaret Hassan nominated Merrimack High School senior Jonathan Peters for an academy nomination to the United States Air Force in Colorado Springs, and I think that is a heck of an accomplishment for this young gentleman. These, you know, these, you know, these nominations are very rare, and the fact that we have an individual in our community that not only has the academic prowess, but the leadership skills to warrant such a nomination, I think, is commendable, laudable, and certainly is befitting of not just himself, but his family, and obviously, the Merrimack community, so I wanted to congratulate Jonathan, and send him our best wishes, and I wish him nothing but success out of Colorado Springs and what happens down the road, so, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, that was my only...
That was my only...
Yep. The only thing I'd like to touch on is, I find the older I get, here in town, the stalwarts are starting to fade away, and we lost a big one, you know, the, the pillars of our community. Frank Lagana, whom I've had breakfast with for probably fifteen years, passed away on the fifth, and it, it's, they're, these guys are, they're some of my best friends, I have to say, and they're all a lot older than me, which is beautiful, but I, Frank used to, he used to love to go to Foxwood, and I don't care for gambling, it's just not my thing, I don't see the entertainment, but I would become their, their gopher, their, it was Better Late Than Never TV show, if ever you seen, that's what it was, and I was, I would drive them and stop at all the rest areas and everything we had to do, but, six weeks ago, we, Frank made his last trip to Foxwood, and I was thrilled to have been with him that day, and he...
But he was well up there?
Yeah, he, he had issues, but I didn't... He, he had issues, but I didn't, you know, I knew that he did, but he didn't act it at all. As a matter of fact, when we got there, he, we're getting one of those carts for one of the old guys, and, and he's running off because he couldn't wait to get upstairs and start gambling, but he, I'll miss him, he's just a wonderful guy who had his grumpy moments here and there, but just... Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so anyhow, my thoughts go out to his family, but, so anyhow.
Paul says aye. Motion adjourned.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero. Thank you, everybody.